Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege and the opportunity to gather together in the seat of our city's government to conduct the business of our city. We thank you for that freedom as Americans. We thank you that we live in the city of Los Banos. We thank you for the people of our city. Your word tells us that we are to do good to all people. So we thank you, God, for the community that we have. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. We pray for our city council, our mayor and council members, that you would bless them abundantly, bless them in their families, bless them in their homes, bless them in their health. I pray give them divine wisdom to lead and guide our city in the way that will be pleasing unto you. We thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Continue to bless us and lead us forward that we might be pleasing to you in your sight. We give you thanks for all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Call the meeting to order at 6:01. If I could have Police Chief Breezy lead us in the pledge.
... to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If I get a roll call?
Here.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. Item four, consideration of the approval of agenda. If I get a motion, Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert, say again. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chamber information table in the back. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward and just as a reminder to silence or mute your cellphones.
Hello, my name is Amy. I am here today seeking information and transparency on the use of automated license plate readers in our city. ALPRs are high-speed, computer-controlled camera systems that capture all license plate numbers that come into view. These cameras provide data consisting of location, date, times, and sometimes photograph the vehicle with the drivers and passengers inside. Once the data is collected, it is then uploaded to a central server. Law enforcement uses this technology to trace plates, identify where certain cars have been or are going, and gather information on vehicles associated with each other. This data is often stored for extended periods of time, documented up to five years. ALPRs are an invasion of privacy. The collection and sharing of ALPR information is a violation of our civil rights. Because every driver must display a license plate in public view, every driver's information is collected by this intrusive technology and not just those believed to be connected by a crime. This data collection breaches First Amendment protected activity and target those who visit sensitive places such as churches, gun shops, union halls, those organizing for lawful protests, health centers, and immigration clinics. It also jeopardizes the poor and people of color. I look at this technology as warrantless searches. Less than two weeks ago, a damning article was published that identified 71 California police agencies who violated state law SB 34 and AB 1242 by sharing data with out-of-state law enforcement agencies. Since the overturning of Roe v. Wade, ALPR technology and data collection is exploiting and attacking the reproductive rights and privacy of women. Law enforcement officers in anti-abortion jurisdictions who receive information from ALPRs in California threaten those obtaining or providing abortions in California since several anti-abortion states plan to criminalize and prosecute those who seek or assist in out-of-state abortions. One of the identified police agencies who shared protected information was the Merced Police Department. I am here asking, did the Los Banos Police Department also share their ALPR data collection with out-of-state agencies? How many ALPRs are in use now in our city? Who has access to the city's data collection? Does the police department keep only the records of license plate characters, or does it retain the video or other related images, including the surrounding area and pictures of the drivers? How long do our police retain ALPR data? Who does LBP D share the data with? These are important questions that I think the council and the police department should answer and provide to concerned citizens like myself. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Kami Avalar, 1810 Pitzer Way. Going to become a familiar face. I'm talking about the homeless on the rail tra- the homeless on the rail trail between Pitzer and, well, behind Pitzer, between Mercy Springs and Place Road. Thank you for returning phone calls. I appreciate that. But I don't agree with the assessment. There's nothing we can do about it, or you're just going to have to deal with it until for six months until we get funding, and then another, what, four months, six months, eight months until we build something? I mean, it's, I have pictures of progressions. I have them dated of how bad it's gotten since just the last time I was here. I talked about the crime. This morning, there was somebody on my porch, sleeping on my porch. All right. Two nights ago, both windows closed, 1 o'clock in the morning, I get woken up out of a dead sleep with a fight between people behind me. There are cars going up and down the street still. I call the police, I call the police, I call the police. They've come twice. I think I've called 15 times. I take pictures of the vehicles. There's fires. This morning, I opened up my window, and there was a fire, and you could smell plastic or treated wood, and that's coming in my window. There are not supposed to be fires. This is a, this was supposed to be a walking trail. They've already burned four trees. We've talked about this before. This problem is going to get worse, and the solution at this point that I'm hearing is, well, if we move them from there, then we're just going to bother somebody else. I am pretty sure that we can find a place where they're not going to bother a neighborhood. There are lots of places in Los Banos where we could, I'm sure where we could find something. I'll show all. Down, they're labeled, oh, missing two, left, right, right behind. You can see it, that's the road that's behind my house. You can do something because they're not on the canal. If they start to build a campment there, they are moved. At this point, they are being directed to come to that rail trail. I pay my taxes like everybody else does. I pay as much tax as everybody else does. Why is it that our neighborhood has to bear the brunt of this? I feel like the mobile home park complaining that we're now second-class citizens. I know I'm not. Mr. City Manager, I understand that you are, have a part in directing them where to go. I think, given your talents, you could, given your smarts, you could put all that to use and find some other place for them to go. Why don't the police respond? Why is the fence not locked so they can't drive up and down that trail? Drug deals. My husband saw a prostitute the other day. In fact, I think there was one standing in front of our house. This is not going to stop. It's going to get worse, and it's not fair to put it in our neighborhood. Because you don't live there? Great, fabulous. I do, and so do my other neighbors. I would appreciate you putting much more attention to this and finding somewhere else. They were next to the police station, which I thought was a pretty good place. There isn't one person there anymore. Thank you.
It's U-H-L-E-Y, I noticed in the minutes. It was spelled incorrectly in the last meeting. I am, hopefully you all indulge me in a few topics that I want to bring towards you today. The first would be just reiterating what I had spoken about last time, and that would be the development of an animal advisory committee, and I hope to see that on the agenda in the very near future. I know that the city would definitely benefit from having such. Secondly, I notice as we're going, the city is working on the 2324 budget. It would be really great to see a lot more money directed towards the shelter, not just the grant money that we have for perhaps, you know, rebuilding new facilities or the spay-neuter grant money. Wait, the first money wasn't grant money, I'm sorry. But anyway, but actually fund the shelter a little more than it has been, actually a lot more than it has been, to allow additional staffing, additional care for animals, perhaps the, at least attempting to get a medical director. I know that that's going to be a difficult thing to do, but it is something that if we have the funding for and we're prepared for, at least it's more likely than not having it available and ready to go, should one come up. And, you know, in regards to this, I just wanted to bring something up. Last meeting, one of the citizens who spoke, Alyssa, had mentioned the lack of emergency resources for animals here in town. And of course, while private businesses, we don't have any say, you know, as a city over who comes and opens a business here, we do, however, have the capability of dealing with it from the shelter aspect. She's got a situation near her home with feral cats. They continue to breed. There are massive foxtails around. She grabbed a kitten, and it had a foxtail in its eye. Naturally, it's Friday evening. There is no place to deal with this unless you're going to drive an hour out of town and spend literally hundreds of dollars. This is a feral cat's kitten. This is not somebody's pet. This is something that if we had somebody with the city, it could have potentially have been dealt with that way. Fortunately, she and I are a little bit experienced on dealing with animals. We were able to get the foxtail out ourselves and provide the medical assistance the kitten needs, and it is fine. But it is really unreasonable to expect the vast majority of the community to even attempt such a thing. And the kitten would probably, I don't even know what, you know, it's been so many years now that I've been a person who's not involved in animals that I can't really think what I would have done in my previous lifetime, you know, 15 years ago. What would I have done with that kitten? I don't even know. I don't think I would have let it go. I hope I wouldn't have let it go. I hope I would have dealt with it responsibly, but I can't say that for sure because, you know, I was just like everybody else in this room who doesn't deal with animals. I was exactly the same. I didn't know anything. I didn't trap cats. I didn't have, I didn't even have a cat. So anyway, that's just my second comment. You know, if we had the spay-neuter resources, there wouldn't even be kittens over there. She would have probably have dealt with this a year ago. So the third thing I wanted to bring up is with the increase in the landscape and lighting districts, the costs that we're going to be seeing on our taxes. You know, this seems like a really good time to bring this up, and it's something that has been on my mind for many years now, in fact, since we've been switching over to the LED lights in the city. We are dealing with a lot of really harsh white light that's really high on the Kelvin scale. It, there's not, just masses of scientific research showing why this type of light is harmful to insects, birds, and humans. It disrupts the circadian rhythm of our sleep cycles. I mean, you know, you look at your phones and your computers, and we have these night features on them. I think that speaks very loudly. I'm sure most of us use them at night, and that is to help with our sleep cycles. And by putting these lights in all throughout the city, not only is it really ugly, but it is also harmful, potentially way more so than we even know at this time. There is so much science going on because it's like catch-up with a new technology as this, is, this type of light pollution is encompassing the globe. I encourage the city to sort of put a pause on installing more white light, perhaps looking into changing, like the city of Davis has changed the light temperature of their city to a warmer hue. This dramatically reduces the risks, both associated with sleep glare and the animal and insect kingdom. So it's something that I hope that we can look into as a city. In my own neighborhood, we had gorgeous amber-colored lighting in sort of vintage-style light fixtures.
Fifteen seconds.
I'm sorry?
Fifteen seconds.
Oh, okay. Anyway, it's harsh white now, and it, the length of the light actually is not any different than what it was when it was golden. So it's not, other than looking like a parking lot, it didn't really do anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Mary Bill Garcia, speaking on behalf for the Los Banos Downtown Association, sorry. So, quick update, Fourth of July celebration is our upcoming event. It will be on Saturday, July 1st. It is a free event for the community. Start time will be 4:00 p.m. Carnival rides will start at 2:00 p.m. The location is at Henry Miller Plaza, 600 H Street. We will have two live bands, the OG's Band, which is the old guys, and the Sacred Fire Band, which is a Santana Tribute Band and a Latin rec, Latin rock band. And then we also have Ryan San Pedro, a female student at Pacheco High, will be singing the National Anthem. We will be having a beer booth, food vendors, and arts and crafts. Ronnie will be doing a beautiful rainforest display. The fireworks show will be at 9:30 p.m. Tickets for the carnival rides will be sold in advance at the Downtown Association, Fun Zone, La Papusa Loca, and Genesis Boutique. Rispance vouchers are available now for $30. July 1st, they will be 35. So we would like to thank our top sponsors, which is Morning Star, Young's Air Conditioning, Sutter Health, Mid Valley Disposal, and Jams at 209. Additional sponsors would be appreciated. Our fireworks booth will be at Carl's Jr., next to Walmart at 1551 West Pacheco Boulevard, from June 28th through July 4th. Application for vendors and volunteers can be found on the website, www.downtownlosbanos.com, and at 20, sorry, 907 Sixth Street. So the PBIT presentation for council will be June 21st, 2023, and thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I wasn't planning to speak tonight because we covered a lot the last time I came, a couple weeks ago, but to follow up after Kathy, those foxtails, where's code enforcement? The foxtails in this town are getting completely out of control, and they're at houses that look like people live there, but the foxtails are like this tall, covering the whole yard, and it's a bad problem. So I just wanted to bring that up and say maybe, you know, have code enforcement get on that because it just can't continue. It's terrible. Not, it's for kids, gets in your socks and shoes, gets in animals' eyes, ears, paws. You know, somebody had a $500 bill trying to remove a foxtail from their animal. The rail trail situation, since that last meeting, hearing these people's stories, I have so much sympathy for them, I can't even imagine living in that environment. It's, it's not right. It, it cannot be. It's not okay. That has to get solved. I'd like to ask that you do approve the animal advisory committee and allow people to help take care of the situation that we can take care of. So I'm really hoping that that will happen, and I would like to also see an increase in the budget to take care of animals because we need that spay and neuter fund. We need people to be able to get their animals spayed and neutered. I sent a clip from Nextdoor to you, Mr. Mayor, and it was about someone who had a, found a dog, lost dog, female, looks like she just had puppies, and he could only hold her for a short amount of time. And I said, my opinion on that, don't know if it's true or not, but my opinion on that is that dog was not lost, that dog was dumped because she got pregnant, because whoever owned her could not or did not pay 200, 300, whatever, to get her spayed. So it happens every day, and they, their solution is to dump them. Where did the puppies go in that instance? You know, and that's just one post on Nextdoor. It's on Facebook, it's on Nextdoor, it is every single day. It's happening all over the place, all over this town. So I just can't stress enough, I really hope you'll give some serious consideration to allowing that one big problem to get taken care of by people who are willing to do it. There's not a lot of us, but we're going to try to get more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Levi Fustori. I'm also here to talk to you about the animal shelter. I'm going to skip through some of what I wrote because I think the points have already been stressed tonight. I think most people here will agree that Los Banos does suffer from a pretty serious overpopulation of stray animal problem. I bet everybody here and behind me has some sort of story of finding a feral cat, a stray dog, kittens in their backyard, et cetera. Pretty much everyone in this town has some sort of story, which is not necessarily normal for most cities. I think a lot of people in Los Banos have become accustomed to it. When I parked here at city council tonight, I was greeted by a community cat, just in your parking lot. So I think we can all agree that, that there is an issue, and I think we can also agree that the animal shelter as it stands no longer meets the needs of the community, right? It was built back in the 80s, community was a lot smaller, lots of cities, when they just start out, you get an animal control holding facility, and it just kind of stays that way until change, you know, is forced upon it. I'm, I'm not here to, you know, point fingers and place blame. I think the staff that we do have does what they can with the resources that they have. What I'm here to do tonight is to ask you guys to recognize that code enforcement, which is where the animal shelter is currently under, does not have the capacity to allocate the resources necessary to bring your shelter to where it needs to be. So I'm here to ask that you recognize the need for the Animal Advisory Commission, because you do have a large and growing community of passionate individuals right here in town that are willing to do the work to help solve these problems. You just have to let them. That is why earlier this afternoon, each of you received, I think pretty much everyone received an email from me with a proposal for an ordinance for the formal creation of this Animal Advisory Commission. I asked that you please review that. My previous email to the city clerk went to spam, so please check your spam for that. And I asked that you consider adding this, the approval of this ordinance to the next city council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Elaine Corey, and I'm here to address 518 I Street. What I believe is an eyesore, that platform sticking out four feet into the public right of way. I realize it's intended for outdoor dining, and that's not what I'm objecting to. I'm objecting to the platform itself being on public property. I object to your giving four feet of public sidewalk to a private party for free so they can generate extra income off a public right of way. Once you let them build on it, you've given them the property. It's theirs, and I don't agree with that. You just paid a consultant $583,000 to tell you, we need seven-foot sidewalks to make downtown pedestrian-friendly, and you're giving them four foot of our sidewalk, I think, is wrong. That four feet leaves a measly three-foot walkway to go by, and it's a tight squeeze between that platform and the trees. You have to go on the little area that's the root of the tree to get a wheelchair through there. I don't think that three feet is sufficient. I want to know, where was the city planner, the building inspector, the engineer? When these plans were submitted, how come the departments didn't look at the plans? How did they approve this? Didn't anybody read the blueprints and see that it was sticking four foot into the public right of way? Did they not see that the slope on those little side wheelchair ramps they have going up to 209 are still ADA? they have going up to 209 are still ADA non-compliant? That slope is too steep, and you cannot make that slope right with that platform there. And I think that is wrong. The ordinance was put in during COVID for outdoor dining, and it was meant to be temporary. It wasn't meant to be permanent structures like that platform. I'm not against the outdoor dining, but the tables and chairs should be temporary on the sidewalk and taken in at night, just like Little Diamonds does. They're not to be left out there for the homeless to sleep on and destroy. I think it's shortsighted for you to pin your hopes on one type of business to revitalize all of downtown. If outdoor dining was so popular, why did Black Bear, Woolgrowers, Eddie's Cafe, Jesse's Restaurant, all discontinue it after COVID? None of them kept their outdoors deals? And like Woolgrowers, went through a lot of money to put up their tent and put up their ride iron fencing. It wasn't the ticket. So yes, you should have outdoor dining, but not on a permanent structure. If they want it temporary, let it be temporary. All of you were here except the new members, which was you, Paul, and Doug, and Josh wasn't here at the time when this was passed. I think you as employers should bite the bullet and pay for yours employees' errors or misjudgments by reimbursing 209 Jam for their cost to install it and the cost of taking it out and making it right. And I think you need to make those wheelchair ramps correct, or I think I will call ADA personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Roy Todd. I'm here on behalf of Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, just to give you an update on how things are going with us and things that are happening throughout the town that we're supporting. Uh, first of all, we have, uh, 215 members in good standing, uh, presently. Uh, new members, uh, in May were, uh, Sheena Sweets, uh, Baminos Magazine, I kind of like the name of that one, uh, HOPE Photography, American Cancer Action Network, and CIPSY's Mobile Bar. As far as ribbon cuttings were concerned, a lot of you attended the last one that, uh, that we, uh, were involved with, and that was at Grasslands, uh, Elementary, and it went really well. Uh, I thought that, uh, was really great. Uh, we had an April mixer and, uh, at, uh, Center Memorial. Unfortunately, we, uh, the Zayn Marketing was canceled for the May one. Uh, but our next one sounds like a really good one for June. It's going to be on June 29th, and that's going to be at, uh, Hotel Mission de Oro. And so hopefully I can see some of you folks there and, because those things usually really go, uh, nice and they're left that way. As far as June's concerned, as far as the Chamber Office, uh, June 19th, uh, is, is going to be a holiday, so it won't be open on that day. And again, I've, uh, uh, on June 29th, we're going to have the mixer. Uh, also, uh, a week from this Saturday, so the Saturday before, uh, Father's Day, we're going to have the, uh, Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, uh, Car Show. Uh, it's being sponsored by, uh, Sutter Health, uh, Arco, AMPM, uh, Beverage Ellet, and we also have, uh, uh, the West Side Express is also a contributing sponsor to this event. This event is, uh, date is announced always a year in advance. It's always the Saturday before, uh, Father's Day, Sunday. It's not a secret. It's published, and there's other things going on with that that I can get anyone, to anybody with offline. Uh, and then next, on July 8th, we'll have, uh, Los Banos Chamber will be, uh, holding the Tomato Festival, and that will be at the Merced County Fairgrounds on F Street. Uh, again, that's going to be, uh, Sutter Health and some others are going to be, uh, working very diligently to make that, uh, come up. And also, one thing I'd like to request, and I'm not really sure how to set it up, I, I couldn't get anybody to, uh, tell me, was, uh, got, we got the website going pretty good. I, I showed, uh, uh, Councilman Ken, uh, what we did, uh, there. And so we really spent some time to start with, with the directory. And what I'd like to do is be able just to have somebody pull it up on the screen, and then I could kind of talk people through what, what we did to make it, uh, make it happen. Uh, the nice part about it is you can go into the directory, you can click on the internet icon, the Facebook icon, any of those, any kind of social media icon that's already there, you click on it, it takes you straight to that merchant or that, uh, community group's, uh, website. It takes it to their Facebook, it takes it, uh, to their Twitter, what, what have you. In, uh, my case, we also have LinkedIn. And, uh, then the nice part about it is when you click back out, it takes you right back into the, uh, Chamber website. Uh, it, uh, many hours were, many volunteer hours were spent on that, uh, effort. And so at that point, I would really like to be able to figure out a way to present that at, uh, uh, at a meeting soon. Okay? Thank you much for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I know that you have a full agenda, so I'll keep it brief. My name is Blanche George. Um, I wanted to let you know some of the things that the Elks are doing. Uh, we are doing a community blood drive. Um, there, I don't have to preach to the choir. You guys know the essential accidents are happening, and others, things that are happening that people need blood. And so we're having a blood drive June 17th from 10 to 2:00 p.m. at, at our Elks Lodge. We're also, uh, working on, um, and we're collaborating, we're, uh, doing a collaboration, uh, with our VFW to do a fireworks, um, event. Uh, people can bring their, their lawn chairs and, um, watch the fireworks from, uh, the VFW and the Elks Lodge together. There's no cost to that. Uh, we are providing food for everybody that comes, so we'd like to welcome the community. Additionally, um, we do own our building, and we do rent it out for individuals that will have, that want a nice, safe party and not a house party, but that would like to rent it out. We have a kitchen, and additionally, we have a, a full functioning ABC lounge. And, um, and it's fully staffed for people that want to rent our facility. Last of, uh, least, um, we did work on some projects, and, um, we did do a Mother's Day event, uh, where we fed mothers at no cost. We, people brought pictures of their mothers, and it was a beautiful event and well-attended by the Elk members and the community. There are two quick events that they, also the Elks are having close to October that I could speak about, and that is October 28th, we're having our, uh, Fifth Annual Halloween, um, Pet Costume Contest. And I know we competed with a lot. Um, it is a fundraiser, and we always donate that to, um, pets in need. And we'll continue to do that. And other than that, I'll keep it short. Um, there's other things that we Elks are doing and that we're participating on. Um, one thing that I quickly do want to mention is that on also October 11th, uh, the Friends of the Library is having a thank you event. We purposely changed it from, um, October 18th to October 11th, so we can invite all of you council members to that event. It's a wonderful event at the library, and we'd love to see you all there. You receive personal invitations, um, by mail, and you guys can RSVP and meet some community members that love books. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else? Do we have any write-in comments?
Um, I do have your email, Levi. Did you want me to read that? Okay. Um, Dear Mayor Yanez and Council Members, I trust this finds you all well, and I am sure busily engaged in public service to the wonderful people in Los Banos. Recently, a number of individuals have asked my opinion on a personnel action apparently involving a cost of 1.8 million dollars. I suppose this is quite understandable, given the proximity of my six-month service. I respond that I have no opinion in that I was back doing private sector work and only read about the case in the newspaper. The city and its attorneys have been absolutely faithful in shielding me from this case so I could devote my attention to the heavy demands of being an interim city manager. In fact, during my tenure, closed sessions with the council were structured so that updates of any kind were placed at the end of session, thus allowing me to exit before deliberations began. Further, during my service, I am pleased to report no communications between me and your current CM took place. No phone calls, emails, texts, nothing. Please accept my heartfelt thanks for the honor of serving in the great city of Los Banos. I shall cherish the many items accomplished and help received from everyone. As it was 50-plus years ago, this place is so special. Warmest regards, Gregory Roman. Dear City Council, in driving around our city, I've noticed a lot of things I would like to see enforced. These are ordinances in regards to mobile food vendors. Unless I'm mistaken, please take this time to educate me. I've noticed these businesses have become permanent setups with tables, chairs, tents, and all the accommodations of a restaurant. My of the ordinances do not allow this. They are parked sometimes 24/7 at their, their locations. Even flashing lights can be seen throughout the night. We now have mobile food vendor permits, some that can cruise on city public right of way, stopping for only 10 minutes at a time in one location. I know some of these are ice cream trucks, and I do not have a problem with that. They are not prone to break the 10-minute rule. Mobile food vendors will. I've also noticed banners and A-frame signage that aren't taken down at close of business. This makes our businesses look lazy. I've been told not to complain unless I have, I had an answer or an option in hand. I know code enforcement is who would enforce our rules. Is it possible to have a shift around 6:30 to 7:00 a.m. start time? Then all these infractions would be visible. I know these businesses keep the areas clean. The city staff works hard on rules to keep our city professional and inviting to our citizens. I would like to see them enforced. Signed, Kathy Ballard. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll close the public forum. Move on to, uh, item six, consideration of the approval of the consent agenda. And you want to read through these?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, warrant numbers 238844 through 239163, in the amount of 3,01255 and 14 cents. Minutes for the May 17th, 2023 city council meeting. Los Banos Police Department Annual Military Equipment Use Report for May 18th, 2022 through June 7th, 2023. City Council Resolution Number 6642, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Los Banos and Los Banos Unified School District for the public use of the Seventh Street basketball facilities. City Council Resolution Number 6643, authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Los Banos Unified School District for school resource officer services for the 2020, 2024 through 2026 fiscal years. City Council Resolution Number 6644, awarding contracts for publication, legal notices, legal advertisements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute agreements with the Merced Sunstar and West Side Express. City Council Resolution Number 6645, approving the annual local transportation fund claim to be filed with the Merced County Association of Governments for Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021 swap in the amount of 195,930. City Council Resolution Number 6646, approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account proposed project list for fiscal year 2023, 2024. City Council Resolution Number 6647, accepting the community center parking lot improvements project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number 6648, authorizing a road of construction contract to United Pavement Maintenance, Inc. in the amount of 2,41,755 and 44 cents with a 10% contingency in the amount of 204,175 for 2023 street rehabilitation projects. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anybody wishing to request the item be pulled for discussion? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull item 6H.
6H?
Yes. Thank you.
Any, anyone else on the council? Okay, let's go to item 6H.
We're gonna do this before approving the rest of the agenda?
Did you want to approve the rest, or just pull it for discussion?
Um, I don't know. That's normally what we do, but I don't know what you want to do.
I would say, let's, yeah, let's pull, pull it for discussion and then vote on it together.
So I, uh, was, I, I read through this and looked at the streets on, that are on this program for crack sealing. I'm not sure what the date of this report is, um, because it, it doesn't show that. But I did notice that, uh, there are some streets, one in particular, Birch, um, between Ortigalita and Magnolia, which has a, um, island there. Um, Birch is pretty much deteriorated to the ground, and it's just, uh, gravel. There's no, uh, base, uh, there's no, uh, surface whatsoever. So, um, it, it's on the list for crack seal. I, I would hope that, you know, there's going to be another list provided to council with an update on which streets that are on this list that do not fit the crack seal and, um, that might need resurfacing. So I, I just wanted to propose that question because I, I've had quite a few people contact me about Birch and being upset that the street is in the condition that it's in. And even some on the, uh, streets that, uh, attach to Birch and, and the older districts, their, their streets are falling apart as well, uh, in the original, um, uh, area around there. So maybe if, if, um, our Public Works Director can help out to let us know how we're going to move forward with this.
Good evening, Councilmember Lewis. Thank you for, um, for that question. So that list was part of our five-year paving plans. Um, we are carrying that over. Um, this is the final years of that five-year plan. So, um, we have noticed the same kind of deteriorations on Birch. So, um, on page 109 of this report, we have included Birch Avenue from Ortigalita to Eu, to Eucalyptus Drive as a full rehabilitation and reconstruction for this fiscal year. So...
Okay. So is, is there another plan that's going to be brought back to the council so that we know what streets, uh, are, that are on this list that might not fit this category that are going to get, uh, full resurfacing?
Yeah. So, um, a couple council meetings ago, um, council did approve, um, a, uh, an agreement with a company to do a pavement survey. So we, staff is working on that. So we are hoping to present the state of the suit report to council in July so that we can establish the next five-year paving program.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Are we ready to, uh, do we have a motion to?
Yes, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Clicking some buttons there. There you go. Yep.
On this item here, Mr. Mayor, uh, I fall underneath, uh, a guideline, uh, for this hearing, so I'm gonna step off and recuse myself in this item.
Okay. All right. All right. So we'll, we'll wait for you to step down before we move forward to item seven.
Mayor, just to clarify-
Mayor, just to clarify, councilman owns a business within 500 feet of the business that's being proposed in this item, and that's why he stepped down for this item.
Thank you. All right, let's move forward to item seven, which is a public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein, the court may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearings. We'll go to item 7A, public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and conditional use permit number 2022-10 to allow the use of type 47 alcohol license for the on-sale of general alcohol in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment for Blue Agave Bar and Grill located within the mixed-use zoning district at 509 I Street, accessory parcel number 025-241-003. And for this, we'll go to Community and Economic Development Director, Suzie Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We'll just get right into this. So a little bit of background on this particular project. Back in October of 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of conditional use permit number 2022-10 to the Los Banas City Council. This location at 509 I Street was the former location of NutriLand and Suzie's Dance. So it's right behind City Hall. And the next couple of slides, I have an aerial to show exactly where the project site is located, but this would be right behind us on the alley side facing I Street. So the proposal before us tonight is for a type 47. This is for the on-sale of general alcohol in conjunction with an eating place. Type 47 alcohol licenses are regulated by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC, and the proposed hours of operation are seven days a week from 11:00 a.m. to midnight. This is the aerial of the project site. The project is located at 509 I Street. It's highlighted in yellow for you on this aerial. And it faces I Street. Just for perspective, the red star is where we are located right now at City Hall. So it's it's within just a couple of feet of us. This particular project site is in between Fifth Street and Sixth Street and faces north. This is located in the downtown Business Core District. And we are very excited to see this new business come to our downtown district. Restaurants activate downtowns, and we are excited to see what this will do for our business district. So according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility, and the footprint of the facility is not expanding with this request. The conditional use permit analysis consists of findings regarding the general use permit criteria, and then there's specific findings for on-sale criteria, which are all within the staff report. And if there are any questions, I can go through that. Otherwise, it's all within the staff report of what those findings are, which provide no adverse effect to the neighborhood or the surrounding area. And then the issuing authority is ABC, which is the state of California. The project is located in Census tract 22.01, which is the downtown district. There are currently 13 active licenses within this Census tract. This would be the 14th, and those are active licenses currently being used right now. This is an exhibit of the floor plan and security plan. The cameras are highlighted in the blue circles. There's interior and exterior cameras. I Street, which is the door of the facility, is at the bottom of the slide, and the alley, just for orientation, is on the top of the slide. And the dining is on one half of the proposed project site, and then the back half is proposed for the kitchen area. This is the frontage of what the building looks like now, although that is go is under renovation with a building permit, and we're excited to see what that will look like and as it transforms into a restaurant. This is the interior. This is the interior looking from the door, so looking south, looking towards the alley. And this is as it was with the former dance studio there. And then this is the rear interior of the building. So public comment, public hearing notices were published in the Merced Sunstar and mailed to the 300-foot adjacent property owners on Friday, May 26. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending approval of Resolution 6649, finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301 of SEQA, and that it is an existing facility and approving conditional use permit number 2022-10 to allow the on-sale of general alcohol through a type 47 alcohol license for Blue Agave Bar and Grill located at 509 I Street. The applicant and the property owner are here to answer any questions specifically from the council. That is Eric and Stephanie Delatorre. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Do I have any questions from council? Well, first, is it directed toward the owners or the staff? Either one? Go ahead, Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Staff and Public. My name is Eric Delatorre, and this is my wife Stephanie behind me. And we are the proud property and business owners of Blue Agave Bar and Grill at 509 I Street. We appreciate your time and consideration for approval of conditional use permit to allow us to ban general alcohol for on-site consumption. We are proud to be pioneered with JAMs 209 in efforts to realization of downtown with our new business to enhance current ambiance in hopes of creating a more vibrant dining nightlife experience for residents to enjoy. We are also happy to answer any questions, if you have any. Again, thank you for your consideration.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, and thank you for bringing the restaurant downtown.
Sure.
Stacy did mention that, and this has nothing to do with the license, that I would assume the exterior is going to have an upgrade is?
Yes, we're going to do a bit of a makeover as well.
Okay, I really appreciate that.
Yes.
You're taking that opportunity. Yes. Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right. Do we have? Oh, yep. Let's just get into that. No, thank you. Any of the members of the public wish to speak about this item?
Yes, as a downtown neighbor, we welcome you. I'm so glad that the tenants and the owners are putting outdoor cameras. As decades of knowing about cameras, I do want to congratulate you for putting outdoor cameras at your location for the safety of everybody and for the clear identification. I definitely encourage, instead of 1080Ps, and I'm just assuming, that for the nightlife, that you do high-definition cameras for clear identification for the neighbors. But I welcome you, and I will be there for you. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none? All right, I'll close the public forum session of this. And do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6649 as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Beguna?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion passes. All right, we're going to move forward to item 7B, which is the public hearing to receive public comments and consideration of the levy of proposed annual assessment for the 23-24 fiscal year for landscaping, lighting district numbers 1 through 7 and 9 through 19. For this, we'll go to Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present on these items. Although this is a routine where we do this on an annual basis, it is a very important steps and also something that we look forward to on an annual basis to help staffs to establish level of service as well as establish revenue and expenditure transparency with the community. There you go. So just for background, the city has currently 18 landscape and lighting districts. That is District 1 through 7 and District 9 through 19. I apologize, the numbering is a little bit confusing. We do not have District number 18. We have a total of 18 districts. The purpose of the landscape and lighting district is to establishing a dependable revenue source to help the city maintainings the improvements within those districts. Those improvements ranging from streetlight, landscaping, parks, storm drainage, water, sewage and disposals, as well as park-related facilities. The district maps are shown on here as well as in your staff report. We have been continually updating this as new developments get accepted. They are required to be included in this landscape and lighting district. So the purpose of this meeting is to request for city councils to open a public hearings to confirm and authorize the living of the assessments presented in the assessment role for each landscape and lighting district. The assessment roles are found in the annual reports or call what we call an engineering report. That is, I'll go over in detail a little bit on the structure of those reports. And these reports were available at the city clerk and were published in the newspaper for the May 24. Both the rates as well as the detailed document on expenditure and revenue were presented and available at the city clerk as well as the Public Work Office at 411 Madison. The annual report was structured into six parts. The first part is to identify all the improvements within each district. That's including the plan, the specifications of all of those improvement. That's part A. Part B is an estimates of all of the costs to maintain all of those improvements. That is to establish the cost basis and a level of service to maintain those improvement. That's part B. Part C is the assessments, the breakdown of those costs as is associated with each of the of the properties, that is, each APN as well as each commercial or industrial facility that is benefited into those districts. Part D shows the transparency as the calculations of how staff break down each one of those costs for each of the residential units, each commercials units, as well as the industrial units. Part E is a list of names, addresses, as well as all the APN that pertains to that district. And then part F is, again, is a diagram, just showing all the parcels that is going to be included in each one of those districts. That's why, and I apologize, in your staff reports and your packets, there's a little bit of a thick because each one of those districts contain all six parts as well as all the list of all the improvement parcels and stuff that are associated with each one of those districts. The proposed increase, again, a summary table of this were published in the May 24 on the Westside Express. The rates are, again, are established based on a cost basis as well as level of service. So for districts that are experiencing a deficit, staff is proposing to do a max increase on those districts. As you noticed in previous presentations, some districts has a maximum increase of 10% versus some districts, other districts has a max increase of 5%. On our report tonight, we are proposing max increase on only some of the district that needed them. Those are the district that has experienced some deficits in the past due to the level of service as well as for the capital projects that are associated with them. The district that does not need to have those max increase has been adjusted so that it only reflects the actual cost, the expenditure, as well as the level of service. The reason for a lot of this increase too is, again, one of them is inflations. As you have seen, so I have included on here is the engineered news records for the construction cost index. Last year, we have experienced a huge CCI increase. That is, from March 2021 to March 2022, we have a 15.1% increase in inflations. As mentioned, the the max increase that we were able to living last year was only 10%. So this year, some of the district were experiencing some of those catch-up. Luckily for us, this year, from March 2022 to March 2023, we only experienced about 1.6% in CCI cost index, so that is helping us out. Another ones that you probably have seen is that in the last two council meeting, we have renewed our landscape improvement agreements cost with Ronnie Landscape. In that contract, we have experienced a significant cost increase as the previous contract that was approved was still using the cost back in 2014. So this is kind of a recalibration, and as part of that, we seeing some of those costs being passed downs to these districts. So with that, I would like to request for council to conduct a notice of public hearings and open that for public comments, and then for councils to close the public hearings and adopt the resolutions approving for staff to issuing this assessment as submitted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Have anybody from the public wishing to discuss this? No? All right. Do we have any questions from council? All right. And do I have a motion on item 7B1? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6650 as submitted.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So let's move on to item C, public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of the appropriation limitation for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. For this, we'll go to Finance Director.
So we would like to continue the public hearing for the appropriations limit until June 21, 2023. We usually do both of these with the appropriations limit with the actual formal budget. So it'll be explained in the next one. So there's still a little more work that needed to be done, and we should be completing that this week.
All right, so requesting to continue it till the June 21 scheduled meeting. So at this time, I'll invite anyone from the public that just wants to discuss this matter. Nobody? All right, had to ask? All right, do I have a motion to continue it? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, I have a question. It's been historical that this council has a budget workshop so that we can see what's being proposed in the budget. Any questions that we may have, any suggestions that we may have for changes? What happened to the public, to the workshop?
Should we address the appropriations limit first and then open up the next one to answer that question? I think they're different items, right?
Well, they were they were together on the agenda, so.
So are we doing C and D together?
Should we do separately if that question can be answered?
Okay, then I'll wait till D.
Okay.
All right. So yes, let's do C first. Kind of get a motion. Councilmember Jones?
How do you want to word this? All right, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue. Let's see, the public hearing and the item to June 21, 2023.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion passes. Now we can move on to item D, and I just got to clear some microphones here. Okay, item D, to receive public comment and consideration of the 2023- Okay, Item D, to receive public comment in consideration of the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget. And we're, you're asking to continue both?
Yeah, so we request this be continued to the 21st due to the fact we needed a little extra time. We're adding services and other things through this budget. So it's taken a little bit of extra work on our part to get it right, so.
So I'm gonna open the public hearing first. Bless you. I'm gonna open the public hearing first, and then we'll go to, to any questions. So do I have anyone from the public wants to speak on this, on this matter? No? All right, seeing none? I know Councilmember Lewis, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. So again, my question is, we generally have a special call meeting to have the budget hearings before we pass the budget. So I kind of wanted to know what happened to the, the special meeting?
So you're, are you saying a workshop before the public hearing?
Yes.
Well, we've gone back and forth in this, and we, we thought being administration and management that we would present a, a, a presentation or give you a presentation that, that is fairly involved in terms of the changes to the budget. Some of the budget is, of course, structurally derived and are really just a continuation of last budget. So, so we're really looking at, at highlighting these items and, and to explaining that during the public hearing. I thought that the workshop would be redundant in that fact, considering most of the items that are within this budget are really structural. They're, they, they are recurring. And relating to personnel of, of personnel that was approved in the previous year, there's some items that are carried over into this next year as far as capital project-related items. So we thought as we go through this presentation during the public hearing, it made more sense to the public that we present these items to the council and to the public during, during the hearing.
Well, I understand your position. However, by the time we get that budget, which will be on a Friday, we have three days, which is a Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday, we have the hearing. So the special workshop was always just for the council and the public who may have questions about why is something different this year than it was last year? You know, it's, it's a big process. That budget is a really big process, and perhaps you understand it in detail. But as a layperson, it doesn't give me a lot of time to ask questions when I'm, I'm looking at something for three days only. The, the budget workshop was for a purpose, to give us time before we had to come before the public and approve or disapprove, or to say, hey, you know, we think this department may need some extra money here, or maybe it's too much money in this department. And the public have a say also. So I, you know, I hear what you're saying, but it's, you've really shortened the time for this council to regurgitate all that information that's in a fiscal budget and a lot of money being spent without seeing it and being able to just process it and compare it to last year's budget and how we're going forward or what's being done.
So my goal is to dazzle and clarify the council with my presentation so that, that it won't be necessary or ambiguous as to what we're doing from an administrative standpoint, so. There's also the ability to ask questions prior to that that can direct the presentation during the public hearing.
Are you gonna be here that Monday, Tuesday as well as Wednesday?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay, so again, you know, I think the budget workshops are important, not only to this council but to the community at large. Because they, people from our community historically have shown up for the budget workshops. It's their tax dollars, and they need to know how it's being spent.
Well, I look forward to presenting this to them.
You know, it's, it's a process that's, you know, is thick or maybe thicker than this. So it's a lot of material to go through in a three-day period of time. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'm good, Mayor. I got my question answered. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm, again, I'm, I'm kind of new to this whole thing, but, you know, kind of my opinion is take as much time as you need in your realm because, you know, your job's to work in it and our job's to work on it, right? And so, you know, I'm, I'm of the opinion that when you're ready to present the findings and to give us and the public and everybody the opportunity, I'd, I'd much rather you have your i's dotted and t's crossed rather than, than, than focus on us. So I will, I will wait. And I like the word dazzle. I'm, I'm all about that. So, all right, thank you. So at this time, do I have a, a motion to continue Item D? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make the motion to, to continue this item to the June 21st meeting. Including the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
I'll vote aye on that.
Okay. Right, so moving on to Item 8, advisement of public notices. I understand there's no report. All right, easy enough. Let's move on to Item 9, City Manager Report. Go to our city manager.
No reports tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Item 10, report update on MCAG, Merced County Association of Governments Peninsula Clean Energy Measure V Committee, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District and the Los Banas Downtown Property and Business Improvement LBP bid. So I'll go to Councilmember Lewis first, if you have anything on the, the air.
No report tonight.
Okay. Anything on downtown? Okay. So I'll report on Peninsula Clean Energy. Now that I, as a mayor, I serve on that board. I attended the last board meeting there, and just to share with the public, I, I am, I'm not happy with the amount that we're paying through Peninsula Clean Energy. It's not, not a surprise to anyone. You know, when we entered in the agreement was before my time, and so I just kind of entered into it. However, after doing some homework, I'm seeing that there are some residual amounts of, of money that's being brought into PCE, which kind of tells me that the, the cost of, of what it is to generate that power is not accurate to what necessarily the customer should be paying. And so in, in, in my opinion, I think we're about 13 to 16% off of, of what the discount should be. So we're, we're kind of in discussions with that now. They did report to me that there's gonna be kind of a residual amount of money in the tune of $66 million. And so I'm gonna do everything I can to get as much of that back to our community. And so whatever, whatever that means. And so we're, we're kind of in discussions with that now. As far as MCAG, we have a meeting coming up, so I don't really have anything to report on with that. So moving on to Item 11, Councilmember Reports. Start, Councilmember Jones?
No report, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, I, I'd just like to make some comments on the residents of Los Banas who've come forward in regards to the animal shelter. I've recently had a, a friend of mine report to me that, and she lives out in the country area, she and her husband, where they've had a lot of dumping of pit bulls and dangerous dogs out in the county area just left. And, you know, I'm sure people who feel that perhaps maybe they're not getting the dollars that they want to sell these animals, just get rid of them by any means that they can. And again, I, I, I want to stress how important education is in this process in the long run. A number, just, I can't tell you the number of times I get stopped on the street when I'm walking my dogs, and people will ask me, does your dog have puppies? And it's, it's like, if they see a dog that they think is cute or they like, it's like, I want one of them. It, it's not about can I afford? What is the cost to, to care for these animals? The cost of feed them, the cost of vet, the cost of spading? And those are things that I think are really important for our community. We have been in a crisis as far as overpopulation of animals since the 2008 fall of the economy, and it hasn't ceased. And people were just leaving Los Banas and dumping their animals, leaving them in homes that they had abandoned. It, it was really a horrible situation. So, you know, I feel very strongly about education. I know that's only one component of it, but we, we do have to get control of, of this situation. I, I go to other communities and I see people being more reasonable about how they walk their dogs, carrying disposable bags. You know, just being, abiding to what I would think were reasonable rules within their city. And I don't see that happening here in Los Banas. So I, I welcome the change, and, and I hope that you guys are gonna be able to get your citizens committee together. Thank you, that's it.
All right. Councilmember Lambert?
I don't have a lot to say, Mr. Mayor, but I hope to see everyone out here at our next meeting when we do start hearing the discussion of our budget for this next year. Hopefully, it will clear up, or at least soothe people's minds a little bit to see what we will be heading forward or going forward with. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Begonia?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And I'll go last. I, I just want to kind of want to echo Councilmember Lambert. The things that people come to me with in calls and phone calls and emails and meetings, anything related to the budget, that's something that, again, I'm happy to pass along. Some of the things that, you know, we might take for granted that were just accomplished tonight, I don't know how many emails and phone calls and text messages I got about how bad our roads are. And I've been hearing that for a long time, and I know it myself, right? I, I drive down Birch. Tonight, we, you know, our city manager brought for us, for us to spend $2.4 million to fix our roads. That's a big deal. And so just, you know, we're gonna address the, the issues. I also want to, you know, thank our, our city staff for just some of the other things, you know, tonight. We're gonna enter an agreement to have people use the basketball courts on 7th Street. We have kids out for the summer, so now they have another resource. You know, repaving and, and doing things at the community centers so our kids have a place to go this summer. That's a big deal. And then our PD enter an agreement with school resource officers to keep our kids safe in schools. Those are just some of the things that, that got done tonight. And so again, I want to thank our, our staff for, for putting those things forward. You know, we communicate the priorities, but you're the ones that really make it happen. You know, we just, we come forward with a wish list from the public, but you're the ones that actually execute it. So I want to thank you for that. Thank our, our, our city manager for that. So recently, I attended the San Joaquin National Cemetery on Memorial Day. I was honored to be there. I also attended with the VFW and American Legion at the Los Banas Cemetery, and that was an amazing program. And so I want to thank them for inviting me and having me speak there. Today, I attended a meeting with Congressman John Duarte regarding other elected officials in our congressional area, and just some of the challenges we face. Honestly, I just, I, I'm, I'm very appreciative of where I am in Los Banas. And I don't want to downplay some of the problems and the issues that we have, but, you know, to hear talks of fentanyl overdoses and shootings and home invasions, and, you know, to talk about other issues that come forward, I'm, I'm happy to hear them because we don't have necessarily those issues. So I'm really fortunate for that and appreciative for that. And then this weekend, I did get a call about the homeless encampment. And the first thing I did is I drove over there and I walked the entire thing. And so I walked the back cinder block wall of behind Pitts or, and Mills and Deans and that area. And, and I wanted to kind of put eyes on it myself. Again, it's not perfect by any means, but, you know, it's, it is away from our residence. It's much further away than what it was at the trailer park. And so it's not perfect. We're not gonna make everybody happy. I know in my job, this is, again, if you want to make everybody happy, sell ice cream, don't get in the leadership. But, you know, we're gonna do the best we can with what we have. And, you know, I'm looking forward to, to getting some things solved with the, the upcoming budget. So that's all I have. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Have a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, 7:19.